I do not see Gail or um Kate. Have you heard from them, Steve? Do they intend on attending?
I'm I was in contact with Kate today. I'm assuming she will.
They were both just in power with me. There's Kate.
All right, I'll give him another minute to get logged in here then.
I needed a one-minute break.
Perfect. I can hold off for a minute.
Well, I'm back now. I took it. Do we know how many people are logged in to watch us? I know we're not in the same meeting as everybody is viewing.
I believe at this point there are close to thirty-five. Donna, was Gail in your policy meeting?
Yes.
Here we go.
All right, I see Gail has joined us, so we will begin the Thursday, October twenty-second, twenty-twenty School Board meeting. Uh, Member Clerk, can you please take a roll call?
Okay, Member Corcoran.
Here.
Member Corcoran is here. Member Kettow.
Here.
Your Kettow is here. Member Olson.
Here.
Member Olson is here. Member Rayfield.
Here.
Member Rayfield is here. Member Tyson.
Here.
Your Tyson is here. Member Peterson.
Here.
Member Peterson is here. And Member Luthner is here.
Great. Thank you, Member Clerk. We will see no changes to tonight's agenda. We would look for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, Member Clerk, would you please take a roll call?
Okay, Member Kettow.
Aye.
Member Kettow votes aye. Member Olson.
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Rayfield.
Aye.
Member Rayfield votes aye. Member Tyson.
Aye.
Your Tyson votes aye. Member Peterson.
Aye.
Member Peterson votes aye. Member Luthner votes aye. Member Corcoran.
Aye.
Your Corcoran votes aye.
All right, that we will move to item agenda, agenda item number four, the COVID-nineteen update. Dr. Massey.
Thank you, Member Chair. Um, I'm gonna take a little bit of time tonight to bring you into some data and the specifics regarding uh COVID cases in our local community. So at this point, let me take a moment to share my screen. All right, uh, give me some feedback. Are you able to see that?
Yes.
All right, thank you. What I'm sharing with you is a set of data that we have been tracking for really quite a long time, actually, since the middle of July. Actually, what I would share with you initially is uh we actually track COVID cases for our three counties, Anoka, Chisago, and Washington, every day since the end of July. Um, you can see here in this column that today, October twenty-second, the number of cases that we we that were reported in each of these three respective counties. And if I were to slide this over and show you cases from um beginning of August, you can see that there has been a fairly steady increase in COVID cases over time. And that, we believe in consultation with Minnesota Department of Health, uh, along with our local health officials, that that is and that those increases are a reflection of of a lot more testing that's going on and potentially and conceivably even um greater COVID cases in our community. That is difficult to determine based on case rates and positive test rates, but clearly the numbers have been going up. We have been, on July thirtieth, um, as we've talked a number of times, the governor gave us a metric to determine a school model and to set and base our school model for opening and continuing throughout the school year. We were given the task in July to identify how we would open for the school year. And we all know that we opened as hybrid uh secondary and in-person at the elementary level. And the case counts at that time supported that model as our case counts at that time uh were in the ten to nineteen range. As we look at the two-week case count in in this area of my spreadsheet, we get every Thursday morning an update on case counts at the county level for a two-week period of time. So it's a metric based on cumulative COVID case, positive COVID cases in a at the county level per ten thousand residents of that county. That data is two weeks delayed, so you can see that here on uh on October twenty-second, we receive data for the two-week period September twenty-seventh through October tenth. I'm gonna draw your attention away from that data for just a moment and bring you back in time and show you uh over here in mid mid-August, we were tracking some increases in Washington County. You'll remember the conversation we had around those numbers being in kind of that next band that might suggest that we moved from in-person elementary to hybrid. We decided at that time to wait because we were just barely into that band. And fortunately, uh, we waited because you can see in the subsequent weeks, the COVID cases in Washington County dropped and dropped rather substantially. So we were comfortable with where we're at as we started the year and worked our way through September and into October. The daily cases is a reflection of what we anticipate seeing in these two-week case counts. We saw over time these numbers increasing and in some cases increasing dramatically. We were fully expecting the increase that we now see here in Anoka. So the two-week period September sixth through the nineteenth, you can see that number moves into that twenty band. And back up here to the metric, you can see that that band is in that hybrid elementary, hybrid secondary band. Uh, with the daily counts continuing to rise, we see that number increase to twenty-six in the next two weeks. We see that number increase to twenty-eight the next week. And now four consecutive weeks with these two-week reports, we're now into thirty-three-point-one-six reported today. Let me take you down to Chisago. Early on, Chisago was pretty low. And then we started seeing some pretty good increases uh in Chisago County. And just in the last three weeks, they've entered that next band of into the twenties, which would suggest hybrid elementary, hybrid secondary. And not only um a steady increase, but a substantial jump this past today for the uh previous two-week report. In Washington County, we're seeing a similar trend with now a three-week run in the twenties and now in the thirties. Let's now zero in on September twenty-seventh and October tenth, the report that we got today. We now have moved from data in the twenties, the previous number of weeks, to a pretty substantial jump where now we're in the thirties, thirty-three-point-one-six, thirty-nine in Chisago and thirty-two-point-six-five. These are substantial jumps, uh admittedly, and uh clearly acknowledging that those are significant jumps that is causing our administrative team, our planning team, uh, significant concern. Uh, we it clearly reflects greater um COVID numbers, at least identified as positive counts. Is that a reflection of more COVID in our community, therefore greater risk? Is it an indication of greater testing, therefore the case counts are going up? Is it a combination of both? MDH would say, and our local county people would say, it's probably a combination of both. When we zero in and look at the positive case count, that's been fairly steady, although the last couple of weeks, that's beginning to nudge upward as well. So what I would like to also add to this conversation is we've been tracking county data and zip code data and local data. The zip code data is showing a a fairly steady increase in cumulative cases, similar to the county level. And then, as we look at our county data and local data, we we step back and and examine, how is how is that possibly or potentially playing out in our schools? Just today, I shared earlier in an email that uh the high school has had uh five cases in this reporting period with MDH. And we're on the MDH, Minnesota Department of Health, um, list of schools that have had five case student cases within a um the reporting period. We have had um a number of situations, not many, but we've had situations at the elementary level where we have a positive case in a classroom resulting in needing to exclude that particular classroom. We had the closure of Wyoming Elementary, as you know, for a two-week period of time. We've had cases at the middle school and at the the high school student cases and some staff cases. Uh, fortunately, based on our mitigation efforts, our uh efforts to uh socially distant, practice all the safety measures that we had planned for, we have had fairly, a a fairly low number of exclusions based on positive cases at the middle school and at the high school and at the community school. Because we don't, we're not, we're not identifying a large number of kids who fit into that six-feet-for-fifteen-minute close-contact definition. Uh, we are beginning to see um some some cases at our elementary level and continuing to see some cases at the high school. On one hand, we're able to manage what we're seeing, and we're not excluding, needing to exclude large numbers of kids, but some. So the sum of all of this is to say that uh on one hand, we are managing uh our school models extraordinarily well. A real tribute to our staff who are really diligent around safety measures, mitigation efforts, distancing, trying to teach elementary kids while exercising distancing and kids wearing masks. All of those have been implemented with fidelity and with a real serious effort. And it it shows when we have cases in terms of the number of kids that we identify as close contacts. And I would point out that we are yet to identify a spread or someone contracting COVID within our school setting, at the student level or staff level. We are, we are not aware of a staff contracting COVID in school or a student contracting COVID in school. Frankly, the secondary cases come out of sports, activities, gatherings, uh sleepovers, uh, things that happen in the community that teenagers do, right? And as much as there are messages around trying to not gather, uh, kids and adults are social beings, and it's hard to completely limit that, and as a result, there's some exposure. So again, as we get these numbers today, I I would share with you that it is causing our administrative team, our planning team significant concern about the numbers we're seeing. They're alarming. We, I would suggest to to you, the board, that um these numbers indicate that we need to take a closer look at our current school model and analyze whether or not we're in the appropriate model, given the numbers that we're seeing. We we have said from day one that we're driven by two primary objectives. One, to maximize in-person learning to the fullest extent possible, given the metrics, the data that we're getting from the counties, maximizing in-person learning to the fullest extent possible. We opened in-person when many districts weren't able to. We've, we're in our seventh week and we're having um a lot of success, with some cases, but with a lot of success. These numbers might indicate that uh we might be entering a new phase in terms of what we can do as a school model. So that's one priority is maximizing student learning. The other equal priority, and we have said it over and over again, is ensuring and maximizing staff and student safety. And never compromising, that is a primary goal. So the two of them are compatible goals. At the same time, we can't, we can't focus on one at the expense of the other. Uh, so we have to work with both of those in tandem, and it's complicating, complicated work to do that. Uh, we're torn with the desire, and I know our teaching staff is torn and and educators across the board are torn with wanting to maximize student learning, but at the same time, we're seeing alarming increases in cases. These numbers just came out today. We spent a lot of time examining them, studying them, but we need more time to study whether or not, or what this means with respect to our school models. And I would offer to the board that we need some time to do that, and we um I would offer that we need to start that work ASAP. And again, study what that means. I I'm not able to predict now what that means by way of adjustments, if we're in a position to make adjustments to our school model. But we do need to study that, analyze that, examine that, and if make an adjustment, determine what that looks like. So with that, um, Member Chair, I would open it up for questions.
All right, do we have any questions?
I have a concern. Um, as you said, Steve, the um, everything that I've heard, at least through the media right now, is that the next six weeks, if not longer, are very critical weeks. And because of winter arriving and everybody going indoors and all of that, and the holidays coming, I think that we're facing a real serious challenge. I mean, and I don't think it's, it's, it's going to probably, based on the media or the experts, only get worse for probably at least the next six weeks, so. So I'm glad that we're on top of it, that we're making considerations with what to do.
Thank you.
So I have a question for the superintendent. So how long do you think it'll take for the team to look at this and make a decision?
Uh, we're, we're pretty efficient at at sitting around the table and and analyzing and looking at models. I don't think it takes uh a ton of time. I'd hate to commit to, we're gonna know what what makes sense by X date. But, you know, we're talking about, you know, a day or two to do this, and um, again, I don't wanna lock ourselves into a timeline. But along with that, if there isn't an adjustment, staff need time and, uh, more importantly, young families need time to figure out what that means at the family front. So those are pieces we need to factor into this as well.
Right. I know you did have the letter go out, because parents have commented that they received that. So they have a little bit of notice, so that's a good thing. Um, I wanted to ask you, and this will be my last question, I'll let it go to other other members. Um, so our mitigation efforts have been really effective. Um, we do have some elementary buildings that haven't had any cases, correct? Like Scandia?
Yeah, I think that, yeah, you're, you're testing my my memory here, but I do, I know that that's the case in some of our schools. We've had more cases in some schools um versus others, but, you know, I, you know, we, to Member Kettow's point, the next number of weeks are gonna be challenging from everything we're hearing.
Yeah.
We will analyze this, but it might make sense that if we do make an adjustment, that we make the adjustment for the entire district.
Okay.
Rather than one school versus another, only that then have to come back and make an adjustment in another part of the district.
Okay, so that's, that was the question I was getting at. Okay. Yeah, and they are saying with the twin-demic, with, you know, the flu influenza, with uh the pandemic, you know. So I agree with Member Kettow that we are in kind of that trepidatious time period. So thank you.
Thank you, Member Tyson. We'll move to Member Rayfield, then Member Luthner.
All right, thank you. Uh, Superintendent, um, I'm just concerned, I wanna make sure that um if we're making these kind of, as we're making these decisions, you know, looking at the different numbers coming out and trying to make decisions about what happens at our schools, I wanna make sure that we leave our parents enough time to kind of make the adjustments. And uh, well, how do you see this kind of plan out, that you'd kind of ensure that our parents are aren't broadsided by these kind of uh decisions?
Yeah, you know, excellent point, and and administratively, we understand the the importance of that. As these numbers have moved gradually, you know, we're, we're at a, at a alarming level, at the county level, but we're not seeing a critical, we're not seeing an outbreak in any one of our schools or parts of the district. That might give us some time to announce a change, if we're gonna make a change, and provide us, in trying to maximize as much time for families to make childcare adjustments and supervision adjustments that they need, they may need to make for their kids.
Member Eka?
Yes, thank you. I have two questions. The first is, um, are we considering a different next step than what the governor has prescribed, um, being we could do hybrid-hybrid, so hybrid elementary, hybrid secondary, instead of moving everybody one step uh forward to hybrid elementary and distance secondary? So more keeping secondary where they are and moving only elementary, even though our numbers dictate a different set of guideposts, so if that's on the table. And the second is, um, I'm sure it's on your mind, but if we could get ahead of any outbreaks, like not actually wait for the worst to happen, um, because we are looking at those numbers daily, you can almost predict what the next number is, how the trend lines are going, that rather than waiting to the last moment, we're considering kind of a a tactical best timing.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think that's part of our analysis. Um, I don't think we're in a, we have to move tomorrow. Um, but we're also not gonna delay our our planning and analysis of what what might make the most sense. Uh, you can see I'm being careful not to uh project what it looks like. We need our team around this. Um, I need a a lot of thoughts and minds around this, and um, that's why we have a great team. We'll do that. Uh, but the the metric that we received from the governor has some limited bands, but the guidance we received from day one from the Department of Education is that the the district has some flexibility to be hybrid-hybrid, um, or in-person, distant, but any combination of those bands. So all those options are available to us.
Thank, thank you, Member Luthner. I see Member Rayfield has his hand up.
Yeah, Superintendent, I was just kind of wondering if you could kind of detail. Um, I know in like staff welfare and and other conversations we've had, you talk about uh the process of talking with the Department of Education. Can you kind of just talk a little bit about, you know, where you're getting input for these decisions?
Yeah, you know, sometimes I I I feel a little bit um overwhelmed that we're not doing a whole lot else other than planning for school models and dealing with COVID, but that's the state we're in. Uh, we're on the phone weekly with the Minnesota Department of Health. I've been on a conference call earlier today with Anoka County Department of Health and superintendents from Anoka County. Yesterday, I was on with Washington County Department of Health and superintendents from Washington County. Um, our local nursing staff have such a pulse on uh student and staff safety, they've been an invaluable resource for us. Tricia Pazuti, in particular, um, our district nurse, working on the COVID front for us. Um, earlier today, I was on a extended uh call with the Education Commissioner, Mary Catherine Ricker, trying to tease out where the state's at with their expectations for school districts and their analysis of the numbers. So, yeah, we are uh well-connected with people that that have a lot of knowledge and guidance for us, for sure.
Thank you, Member Rayfield. Does anyone else have any questions for the superintendent?
I just have a comment. Uh, Steve, I don't envy you in this decision-making, but I have every uh ounce of faith and respect with the team for getting us to the next step. And I'm just thrilled that we were able to start in person, and hopefully we bring it back around.
Yeah, and I would, thank you for that. I would say that, you know, if there's a shift to be made, uh, we have a lot of school year left, and if if we need to shift and the numbers then shift, we can shift again. I would, however, uh caution any of us to think that we are gonna be shifting one week in, one week out. An outbreak or running into staff shortages, yeah, that that will cause us to uh adjust daily or weekly. But if we shift our model, we're gonna be shifting our model for the for the a longer period of time. But we'll pay attention to the data, and when we can maximize student learning, if we need to go more restrictive, and then at some point, we can bring kids back in for more direct learning or in-person learning, we would do that.
All right, do we have any other questions for the superintendent?
I just wanna concur with Member Olson that, you know, our staff and our superintendent, our admin, have all just eats, slept, and breathed this. They've just knocked it out of the park. And I have so much confidence in their decision-making process that um our students and our educators will benefit from the decisions that they make, and everybody else stay healthy and safe.
Member Luthner?
Question, comment, family. So again, I I think it's a testament to doing a really good job, uh, and a lot of foreplanning and follow-through that even with the community doing what the community does inside the schools, things have stayed as controlled as I think possible. And this is your opinion, and you as I think possible. Um, and this is your opinion, and you don't have to answer, but do you feel like kids in school would be safer or kids at home would be safer? Just quit. In, when they're supervised and with the guidance of the teachers and staff versus just struggling with the distance components of, of relearning? And I will probably get there at some point, but every day that they have with their teachers is adding to the education.
Yeah, from a learning standpoint, um, as I've indicated, we believe that there's, um, it's far more advantageous to be face-to-face with teachers. Uh, hence the priority to maximize in-person learning to the fullest extent possible, provided the data permits us to do that. Um, we, we believe that our mitigation efforts have provided a safe learning environment for students and staff, but the numbers we're starting to see might be a game changer. And that's the analysis we need to make.
All right, do we have any other questions for the superintendent? Well, I too would like to thank you for, you and the team for all the work around, uh, school modeling and where we're at and the importance of keeping the safety of both the students and the staff in mind when we make these decisions. Um, do we have anything further from any other board members? All right, hearing nothing. I see we have nothing under old business or new business. So a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Yeah.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Uh, member clerk, would you please take a roll call?
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member Olson votes yes. Member Rayfield?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
Member Tyson votes yes. Member Peterson?
Yes.
Member Peterson votes yes. We now have a majority, but still, member Luthner votes yes. Member Corcoran?
Yes.
Member Corcoran votes yes. And, and member Kettle?
For a unanimous vote, I say yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you, everyone. The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.